Good evening. The forty-fifth meeting of the Twenty-Second Council will now come to order. Tonight is a special city council meeting to discuss specifically the Integrated Development Ordinance. All councilors are expected to be present this evening, so we expect Councilor Lewis here shortly. We'll get started with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the sign-up table. And we have a few announcements. And we'll get started with Councilor Jones. I can read it if you like. All right. On behalf of Councilor Jones, the Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, this Wednesday, November fifteenth, is canceled. Councilor Peña.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be an Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Water Utility Authority meeting on Thursday, November sixteenth, at 5:00 p.m. in the Vincent Y. Chambers.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, at 5:00 p.m. in the Council Committee Room on our ninth floor.
And the Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Government Commission meeting scheduled for Thursday, November sixteenth, is canceled. So we'll move on to final actions. Items A, B, and C all relate to the Integrated Development Ordinance, IDO. Therefore, they will be discussed together. We'll start with council staff giving a brief introduction. Ms. Morris.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors. This is a special meeting of the City Council for O seventeen forty-nine, R seventeen two thirteen, and R seventeen two forty. This is the third hearing by the full council on the adopting ordinance and resolution for the proposed Integrated Development Ordinance, commonly referred to as the IDO, and the resolution, excuse me, directing the planning departments to process a series of voluntary zone map amendments. The IDO was introduced to City Council on June nineteenth and has had four hearings with the Land Use Planning and Zoning Subcommittee of the Council. Through the land use planning and zoning process, thirty-one amendments to the IDO were passed. The first hearing on the IDO by the full City Council was held on October sixteenth, and the second hearing was held on November sixth. At the November sixth meeting, fifteen amendments to the IDO were passed. In addition to considering O forty-nine and R two thirteen, the adopting ordinance and resolution for the IDO, before you this evening, councilors, is Resolution two forty. Resolution two forty directs the planning department to conduct a year-long process of voluntary zone map amendments that would be conducted subsequent to the adoption of the IDO once the IDO becomes effective. The adoption of the IDO is a legislative process. Therefore, conversions of zones throughout the city must follow a consistent process. For example, properties zoned M one are converted to non-residential LM, Light Manufacturing, N R L M, and properties zoned R three are converted to R M H, Residential Multi-Family High, regardless of how the property is actually developed. Resolution two forty directs the planning departments to analyze requests from property owners to rezone their property based on the actual development of their property. This will be an opportunity to address any mismatches in land use and zoning citywide. In addition, it should be noted that there is nothing to prevent property owners seeking a zone map, zone change between the adoption of the IDO and the effective date. Any zone map amendments that are approved between the adoption of the IDO and the effective date of the IDO will follow the conversion rules. For example, if someone has a property zoned O one that would convert to M X T, and they have a zone map amendment approved during the effective period that changed their zoning to C one, the zoning for the property would be converted to M X L rather than M X T. The process outlined in Resolution two forty would be voluntary and will involve outreach from the planning departments to reach as many property owners as possible to reduce the amount of mismatched land use and zoning citywide. Tonight, we will be discussing nine specific amendments. I will be going through a short summary on each amendment tonight, labeled E, T through Z, and A A. Packets for the public containing each amendment are available at the sign-up table. Councilors, you have this packet in front of you as well. During this presentation, please feel free to stop me with any questions or if you need clarification on any of the amendments. The summary will be followed by public comments on new amendments. Amendment E, requiring a mix of uses. This amendment would require development of properties with mixed-use zoning on properties abutting a premium or major transit corridor on the west side of Albuquerque, zoned either M X T, M X L, M X M, or M X H, to include a commercial component. The commercial component required through this amendment would be fifty percent of the primary building facade on the ground floor. This would not prevent residential development behind or elsewhere on the ground floor or on any floors above. This amendment would also not prevent the development of a property with purely non-residential uses. This amendment seeks to address the jobs-housing imbalance and to ensure that development of mixed-use zoning doesn't result in purely residential development. The west side of Albuquerque has significantly less commercial, office, and industrial zoning than the east side of the river, and it is important to preserve the opportunity for the provision of employment opportunities and services to current and future west-side residents. This amendment was first presented to the City Council meeting on the IDO on November sixth, and it has been revised since it was first presented. The revisions are in blue. I'm going to take the next amendment out of order as it is related to the previous amendment, E. This amendment, Amendment X, requiring a mix of uses a hundred percent, is the same as Amendment E, except that it would require the provision of commercial uses on a hundred percent of the primary building facade on the ground floor, and additionally, it would apply only to properties abutting Central Avenue on the west side. Like the previous amendments, this would not prevent the provision of residential development elsewhere on the property, either on upper floors or elsewhere on the ground floor. It should be noted, councilors, that you should vote for either Amendment E or Amendment X or neither amendments, but not both, as they are competing amendments. Of the amendments that I will be presenting tonight, these are the only two amendments that compete. Amendment T, N R C on the west side. This amendment would revise the Land Use Planning and Zoning Amendment D D, which revised the conversion rules for properties zoned C two on the west side of the river. This amendment would revise the conversion rules to apply only to C two properties located north of I forty. This means that properties zoned C two south of I forty will all convert to N R C, non-residential commercial, unless they are located in proximity to premium transit areas. This amendment will not impact the M X M proposed to convert near the A R T stations along Central Avenue. This amendment seeks to address the jobs-housing imbalance on the west side and the unlimited amount of services on the west side of Albuquerque, particularly in the southwest quadrant of the city. Amendment U, increased effective period. This is an amendment to O forty-nine rather than to Exhibit A of O forty-nine. This amendment would increase the effective date of the IDO from six months to one year. This would allow more time for the planning department to train and educate staff and the public on the IDO, and more time to address any issues that are identified during this process. The City of Albuquerque would continue to operate under the current zoning code and zone map during the one-year effective period. Amendment V, S U one site plans. This amendment would give the Environmental Planning Commission the authority to approve site development plans for parcels that were zoned S U one prior to the effective date of the IDO and have an adopted site plan. Without this amendment, sites zoned S U one could choose to develop under their S U one-approved site plan, or they could develop under straight zoning and be approved administratively. There is concern in the community that S U one sites have received extensive public inputs on the site plan, and to allow the property to develop differently without public review would not be appropriate. This would only apply for the initial transition from the S U one site plan to the straight-zoned site plan. Amendment W, East Gateway Fuel Sales. The East Gateway Sector Development Plan prohibits light-vehicle fueling in the East Gateway C A C and N A C zones. This amendment would return the prohibition to only those locations. The East Gateway Sector Development Plan sought to encourage the redevelopment of key areas within East Gateway with a mix of uses that would create an active area that serves the needs of adjacent residents. Amendment Y, Cottage Development Parking. This amendment would add two additional parking spaces for cottage developments in the R A and R one zones. These two additional spaces would be in addition to the one space per unit minimum. This would ensure that there is enough parking on-site to serve the needs of guests or service workers visiting this property. This could help in areas where there is limited on-street parking available. This amendment has also been revised since it was provided to the public on Thursday, November ninth, to include an increase to the maximum unit size from a thousand square feet to one thousand two hundred square feet. This will provide more flexibility in the range of unit sizes within a development. This would not increase the number of units on a property and would not change the total gross floor area that could be developed in a cottage development. Amendment C, Nob Hill Building Heights. This amendment would revise the heights in the Nob Hill CPO between Graceland and San Mateo along Copper Avenue. The first fifty feet in from Copper Avenue would be capped at forty-five feet, and the next fifty feet would be capped at sixty-five feet. This is designed to provide a transition from the more intense heights and developments along Central Avenue to the residential development on the north side of Copper Avenue. And Amendment A A, Technical Edits. This amendment proposes a number of changes to the IDO that are technical in nature and non-substantive. Ongoing staff review and response to public comments identified a number of technical revisions that will make the draft clearer and easier to use and administer. This is a general cleanup of the documents. Attached to the amendment is a spreadsheet that identifies the proposed edits. There are multiple line items in this amendment, and in general, each item is unrelated to others. If there are any items within the spreadsheet attached to the amendment that a counselor would like further discussion on, that item or items can be removed and treated as a standalone amendment. This amendment is in addition to Amendment W, passed during the LUPS process, and Amendment S, passed at the November sixth City Council meeting. Councilors, this is the last amendment of my summary tonight. Ms. Schultz, Mr. Melendez, the planning department, and I are all still available to address any questions and clarifications that she may have.
Thank you, councilors. Any questions or clarifications at this time? We'll be able to, of course, ask of staff these specific questions that arise as we go through the amendments. I did have a request from Ms. Michaela Rens Whitmore to speak and summarize her observations over the last, I don't know, over the last years and years and years, maybe.
Mr. President, councilors, through this process, we have come to understand the deep flaws in our existing land use and zoning framework. Sector development plans have only been adopted for half the city. Some of these plans do not even have policies or regulations. Others confuse the two. Over half are more than ten years old. There is no plan, or budget, or adequate staff to update those adopted, much less adopt more, for the half of the city relying on our nineteen-seventies zoning code. Important protections from the adopted sector development plans have been carried over into the IDO, some extending citywide the good protections that currently only protect small areas. The IDO also introduces new best practices to protect neighborhoods and special places to encourage walkability and high-quality building design. If we don't adopt the IDO, what is the plan to adopt such protections? Or to protect those areas of the city that are currently unprotected? The process to draft the IDO has included more input opportunities than any other plan that I know. While some claim that it was too fast or too complicated, if sixty-plus public meetings, a hundred-plus office hours, seventy-plus neighborhood association meetings, twenty-plus media articles, monthly neighborhood newsletter articles, and monthly project emails to over ten thousand email addresses over three years isn't enough, what will be? Change is challenging. But even those who say that the existing system has served us well for forty years can't claim that it can't be improved. Support from the public is always better than the opposite, but for a change this large, is it realistic to expect the majority of people to embrace it? We have heard most from people in sector development plan areas, and it's understandable that changing to a citywide regulatory system is concerning. But who is speaking for the other half of the city? Many of those who are no longer attending meetings or hearings have stopped coming because they are satisfied that the IDO makes sense and offers adequate protections and development standards. Of those who remain, what are they asking for that has not been addressed in the IDO? What we have heard overwhelmingly is a request for more time. The six-month period prior to the IDO becoming effective is designed to offer that adequate time for training, for staff, for the public, and for design professionals. Not only can we address any issues that are discovered in this six-month period prior to the IDO taking effect, we have also built in an annual update cycle for the IDO from here on out. The resolution that council adopted directing us to start this project says that the city shall update and integrate regulations into a new unified development ordinance that implements city and regional growth policies as reflected in the comprehensive plan, while consolidating and simplifying regulations for use by staff, landowners, residents, developers, and the general public. Not only does the IDO carry over regulations from sector plans, the IDO includes countless best practices that are improvements over our existing regulations: neighborhood edges, major public open space protections, flavors of R one, higher building design standards, a modern use table, modern process table, just to name a few. The IDO implements the updated comp plan through standards tailored for centers and corridors, encouraging development through higher building heights and lower parking requirements, and ensuring high-quality, walkable development through higher building design standards. You have heard people say the IDO isn't perfect. It isn't, but it's good. And it's certainly better than the inequitable, unsustainable, and conflicting system we have today. Some citizens may not be ready, but the IDO is. I urge your support. And if you do not support the IDO, my question to you is, what is your plan for an alternative? Because the city we all love deserves better than the system we have today. And if you agree, then you should vote to adopt the IDO tonight to put better standards in place throughout Albuquerque, even as we work on improvements over time. You are the ultimate land use planning and zoning authority. It is not a question of whether to adopt the IDO, but when. Please vote to adopt a better system with better protections than we have today.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Michaela. All right. We are going to move on to public comment, and the intention tonight, since we're focusing on amendments to the comp plan, is to have public comment only on new amendments that are in the package described by staff. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light on the podium will turn green for the first minute and a half, then a bell will ring, and the light will turn yellow, indicating you have thirty seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At two minutes, the light will turn red to indicate your time is up. And I did have a call from a constituent, a person who I respect, who asked about why I was so insistent about not having applause during the meeting. And, you know, it's tough, because I know everybody's, you know, excited, and when they hear things that they agree with, the natural tendency is to applaud. But I just want to talk a little bit about our public comment in the city. And, you know, I don't think there's a single person here that does not appreciate hearing from the public and to get a broad idea of the people who care enough to come down here and speak, what they have to say. We are unique in terms of public entities in the state that provide a televised forum before the public that goes beyond just folks who can show up to the meeting. The legislature doesn't, you know, there are public comment during committee hearings of the legislature, but it's not broadcast, at least not in this day and age. These are primarily committee discussions where public comment is received, but there's no public comment on the main bills that are on the floor before the legislature. And I don't know of another municipality or public entity besides the Bernaleo County that provides the ability to have a broadcast of your statement. At the same time, you know, we're here to conduct public business on behalf of a half a million people. You know, not just the folks that show up, not just people who are engaged in the matters that are before us, but, you know, the issues of a city of our size are pretty important. And that's why, to me, anyway, it's really important that we have decorum at the meetings, that we listen to you, we respect you, you respect our time. We each, we all, no matter who we are, respect the time of people who came down and took the time to comment. And they may or may not be on your side. But if we just open it up to a popularity contest of applause and then jeering, or, you know, if you don't like what somebody said, to just kind of express what your first feeling might be about it, there's a tendency of a meeting to devolve. And we've actually had that happen more than once here, and I certainly don't think it's appropriate. I think we need to respect one another from both sides and from all sides. So that's the reason I feel like we, you know, we have rules that say there not be outbursts and disruptions, and I include applause in that, so that we can just get through and listen to everybody. So that's what that's about. But so we will try to enforce that council rule. Let's get started. We have a number of people signed up to speak, so we'll name three people at a time, so please come up. In baseball, we call being on deck. If you're on deck, come on up and sit in the front row so you can get up to speak. But the first three speakers are Mike Contreras, Loretta Neranjo Lopez, and E. Ward. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President Benton, members of the City Council. I encourage you to vote in favor of the IDO, with the exception of Proposal U, that the city has, you know, the city has had, and public has had more than enough time to, over two years, I hear, three years, to vet this ordinance, so we should stick with the proposed six-month timeframe for implementation. And then, in regards to proposed Amendment V of the IDO, how many S U ones, zone properties in the city will be affected by this proposal? I wouldn't think that there are many, and the ones that are were approved many, many years ago and not applicable in today's real estate market. This proposal appears to be certain property-specific and not in line with the proposed N R C designation and the overall rewrite of the zoning ordinance. Proposal V undermines the long-term goals in achieving growth and development and the employment of our residents. The consultants who have worked on this project said our zoning code is so out of balance, they said it is the worst ordinance they've seen in the fifty or so that they've consulted on. As elected officials, planners, and residents, we should all listen to them and have the courage to embrace the change that is necessary to lift our community. And in addition, you know, I'm a lifelong resident, you know, I was born here, and I think it's time that we make these necessary changes for our city. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Neranjo Lopez, and E. Ward, and then Robert Nelson.
Good evening, President and councilors. The proposed Florida amendment dated November thirteenth, twenty-seventeen, on T, for M X M for C two does not protect the historical neighborhoods. For a clear understanding, the request to change S U two C two and R two to M X M C two apartments only is, in legal terms, a taking for our neighborhood, since the current S U two C three zone allows permissively R two apartments as defined as houses, town homes, and low-medium-density apartments. In other words, R one is allowed and permissive. The proposed mixed zonings and non-residential commercial zoning imposed on the historical residential land use is a taking on the residential land use that has existed prior to the nineteen-fifty-nine zoning code. The property is single-family, and the IDO, single-family dwellings in Martinez Town, Santa Barbara, are non-conforming, meaning these single-family dwellings are proposed to be eliminated or no longer allowed. I respectfully request that you submit the Florida amendment to include that Martinez Town, Santa Barbara area be zoned R one so that the error the city made is corrected and we are not negatively impacted with the proposed changes in the IDO. I will refer you to the Resolution two seventy nineteen eighty and the intent of the current zoning code. Also, the density proposed is too high and will violate the intent to avoid a large concentration of population in one area. Currently, the way the IDO is written is that it will impact the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, which is your responsibility to uphold as an elected official. This is the reason we have stated, and all the neighborhood representatives have stated, we request more time in order for the city to deal with the arrows imposed in our neighborhoods. The new comp plan policy recommends preservation of historic neighborhoods, but the proposed area of change, mixed-use zoning, and the non-residential commercialization in the IDO for the Martinez Town, Santa Barbara neighborhood provides avenue to reassure the displacement of longtime residents. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Ward, followed by Mr. Nelson, followed by Nick.
Okay. Good evening, councilors, President Benton.
With regard to specific amendments, please support Amendments U and V. And I believe the presence of Amendments E, T, and X are a perfect example of why more time is needed and that this process should be deferred for 90 days. We have competing amendments for two meetings in a row. The original intent of the West Side was to improve the jobs-housing ratio. We want to support appropriate commercial development. And I think the amendments are kind of a mess. You've got people on the same side who really need to work things out. It's a false argument put forth by planning that more time would not do any good. That's probably because our suggestions have largely fallen on deaf ears to this point. And if that doesn't change, then it is true that more time won't make much difference. So the councilors, you're just going to have to work out E, T, and X out. I'm sorry. I wish we could, but more commercial that's appropriate to the areas. And once again, the amendments from the West Side, one in caps on density, were ignored. And I'll just direct you to a study published in Criminology. I'll direct you to a direct quote. "There seems to be something about high-density residential units that is associated with all types of serious violent crime, even controlling for other factors in the model." The author's right. Apparently, high-density housing units promote serious violent crime. As well, we need more time to work this out, a deferral for 90 days. Because as you can see here, I mean, based on what we've learned, who would trust the Planning Department now for the CPAAs? Even in their own comp plan, they're not putting through the protections.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Nelson, followed by Nick, followed by Carol Kraus.
Good evening, President Council Benton and council. Thank you for the chance for public comment tonight. My name is Robert Nelson, and I'm on the Board for Wells Park Neighborhood Association and a member of the Historic Neighborhoods Alliance. And both organizations ask the IDO be deferred for 90 days so that equitable input can be made from neighborhoods so they can participate in the creation of our future as a city. A lot has been made of Counselor Gibson's quote that if we wait for this to be perfect, then we've been waiting for a long time. We are not asking for it to be perfect. We are asking to participate. The revelation from the West Side Coalition of Neighborhoods last week was unsurprising in regard to the unchecked power of our city officials and their ability to wield that power in relation to neighborhoods. It's unsurprising in that members of HNA and various other neighborhoods have stood at this very podium to deliver similar messages that our pleas seem to fall on deaf ears, suggest a greater chicanery altogether. Over 65% of the planning participants were white, non-Hispanic. Less than 15% were Hispanic, Chicano, or Latino. Less than 1% were Native American. In a community where there is a rising majority, these types of public projects need input from all of its community, not just those who are white and affluent. As I look upon our council tonight and Planning Department, I see leadership that does not look like our community at all and thus perpetuates the bonds of institutional racism through the IDO and even the art project and even through neurobinism. We must do better. We will continue to work towards eliminating racism in our society and fight for equity in our communities so that future generations will look back at this moment in our time and wonder what took us so long. We ask that community assessments occur before the approval of this legislation, not in the coming months, and that approval be deferred for 90 days after the new mayor election takes place. And that our elected officials in the City Planning Department undergo undoing racism training. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nick, followed by Carol Kraus, followed by Eleanor Walter.
Council President, councilors. Although well-meant, I am opposed to extending the six-month window to 12 months. Elengating a timeline only provides more time to achieve the same amount of work. A better use of time is to keep the six-month timeline and proactively, either by the Planning Department and/or the City Council, to seek feedback and revisions from and train neighborhood leaders and developers and others. That would be time well spent. I am in support of the resolution passing, so this was for you, I apologize. The second one, I believe, was V. I forgot to write them down. I am in support of the resolution, oh, the resolution passing. I really do hope that the Planning Department actively, again, seek out those property owners. And then finally, in terms of Amendment V, I am also in support of passing Amendment V to help new development be more consistent with its environment as the IDO passes. I think it's important that this process continues, that you be involved, that this City Planning Department continue to be involved with us, and that we also be called to the table perhaps a little bit more often. That's the biggest complaint I've heard throughout all this time, that the effort wasn't proactive enough. And maybe there's a way of using ONC's database to specifically target us, the leaders, and not just the neighborhood associations, because the Santa Barbara-Martinez Town Neighborhood Association doesn't speak for me, and neither does the HNA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Kraus, followed by Ms. Walter, and then Dave Hill.
Council President and councilors, regarding Amendment U, I disagree with extending this timeline. Even many who oppose the passing of the IDO now are only asking for 90 days. So surely 180 days is enough time to get any necessary suggestions in for corrections. I urge you to pass this amendment and the IDO. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Walter, followed by Dave Hill, and then Jim Stroger.
I'm Eleanor Walter, and I'm president of the Rio Grande Boulevard Neighborhood Association. We would like to thank Counselor Benton for sponsoring Amendment Y and recognizing the need to provide more parking and cottage development. However, we do not think the addition of two additional parking spaces per development is adequate. In a two-acre parcel, there could be as many as 24 units. In a, say, a 10-unit cottage development, there is parking space for at least five additional vehicles and probably more. It seems to us that a requirement based on DUs would be more appropriate. I hope you will consider a change based on DUs rather than a requirement per development. In regard to the change from maximum size of 1,000 square feet to 1,200 square feet, I don't really have an opinion now, as I just learned about that shortly before this meeting. I sent some comments to each counselor last week regarding the decrease in required off-street parking for residential household living. I would like to thank the four counselors who read my comments and the one counselor who took time to reply. I noted that in Table 5.51, Residential Housing Living, that all categories of housing had a decrease in the number of spaces required for off-street parking, except mobile homes. Decreases in off-street parking will lead to more on-street parking. More cars parked on the street will make the street less pleasant to walk along, so less walkable, and decrease safety for cyclists. I would suggest you revisit the requirement for off-street parking.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, and then Jim Stroger, then Chris Sidio.
Good evening, President Benton and councilors. Been here before, and I've enjoyed this. First of all, I want to thank you guys once again for taking on this task. I know it's a monumental task, but you guys have taken it on, and I commend you for that. Protection and predictability, citywide. That's what this IDO does. It gives us protection and predictability for both the neighborhoods, the developers, and landowners. And that's what the IDO does. With that, I got to tell you, I'm opposed to the new Amendments E, T, and X. I don't think it helps us on our predictability and protection citywide. I'm opposed to Amendment U. We have been at this IDO for over three years. We've had over 60 meetings, 70 Neighborhood Association meetings, and we have worked at it for three years. It's time to get this IDO passed. I am opposed to Amendment W and V. Again, the whole concept of the IDO is protection and predictability citywide. Let's implement the IDO. I encourage you to pass it tonight, and I also encourage you to oppose the amendments I just talked about. Once again, thank you, councilors and city staff.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, Mr. Stroger, Mr. Sidio, and then Johnny Peña.
Thank you, Mr. President, councilors, and I would also echo Mr. Hill's comments. And thank you to the council and the staff for all the hard work taking on this monumental task. I'm here to speak tonight about several of the amendments proposed, and specifically E, T, and Xed, which address different ways to regulate commercial and mixed-use development on the West Side. My overall observation is that these amendments appear to be based on the false premise that owners of commercial property on the West Side are not interested in developing their properties for commercial purposes. Owners of commercial properties can only develop commercial uses if there's a market for those uses. In many cases, mixed-use projects where commercial and office uses are only a portion of the project are more feasible. High-density residential is often a critical component to making these projects work financially. The cost of vertically mixing uses is often cost-prohibitive, especially outside of the areas of the city with the highest values. If our goal is to encourage new, high-quality development on the West Side, then these amendments will make that less likely and certainly more difficult. One clear example of this is the recent MR project that was proposed for the northwest corner of Unser and Central in front of the new city library. Beautiful area. There's been some great projects down there, a lot of public investment. This project was presented to the Albuquerque Development Commission, of which I'm a member, and was unanimously endorsed to move forward. It's a great project, but it would not meet the test of Amendments E or X. And I think that's a problem. I would also speak against Amendment V. I think this significantly undermines the purpose of the IDO by keeping the SU1 projects in their current condition moving forward. This council debated expansion of the PD last time, and I think you made the right decision. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, Mr. Stroger.
Stroger, Counselor Davis has a comment.
Briefly, you, thank you, Mr. Stroger. You mentioned briefly, sorry to put my brain back in the right gear, the project on Unser, the MR project, that it wouldn't necessarily fit in either one of these amendments. But as I understand it, and correct me, Ms. Morris, if I'm wrong, but if someone were to bring a project like that forward and ADC agreed with it, MR agreed with it, this council agreed with it, there is a process for somebody to apply, still a variance, and to go through that process. Just a different process, to be sure, there's more public input, to be sure it works. Is that right?
Mr. President, Counselor Davis, I believe that's correct. And I guess my point is that here's a project in the heart of the MR that's mixed-use. It's a really cool project, but it wouldn't meet that test because the principal building is 100% residential. There are commercial buildings and office buildings in an outdoor market, but they're not vertically integrated. And the largest of the buildings, which I would, my read of those amendments would be, that would be the primary building, does not qualify for that. So I just think we need flexibility in making sure that we can evaluate those projects without putting an extra hurdle on those, I guess would be my comment. But your comment was correct.
That's a great clarification. Thank you so much, Mr. President, councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Stroger, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you. I don't have a question for you, Mr. Stroger. I do have a question for staff. Under the new IDO plan, this would not be applicable because of the size of the property. I believe they can develop that property, and these amendments would not in any way affect that development. Is that correct?
Counselor Sanchez, it's not so much the size of the property. It's the language that reads at least 50% of the ground floor of the primary building facade. So it would be the, it would need to, there would need to be a commercial use along Central Avenue. I haven't seen the plans for the central Unser property. So there would, there could be residential uses in the primary building. It's just the facade of that primary building that would need to have commercial uses in it.
Right, that's correct. But talking to staff, we did present this plan to staff, and they said that it would qualify, where it would not have to go through any special hearing, is what I was told, with this type of development that they are looking at building.
That's correct. So that property would be converting to MXM, and so they wouldn't need to go through any zone change for the application.
Right, but this amendment that he is questioning would not apply to this property. Is that correct?
It would apply.
Because we were told differently. I spoke with John Zaman, and I also spoke with the developers. That was Maestas Ward and also Chris Baca from Yes Housing and his team.
Mr. Stroger, did you?
Well, I would just, just, Mr. President, Counselor Sanchez, I guess, my purpose of using that project was really as an example of something that might be proposed along Central Avenue in a different location, that I think it's the type of project and the intent of a project like that, including mixed uses, but would not necessarily follow the criteria of this amendment. And so my point was, here's a great project that just went through the city's MR process, got very favorably reviewed by the Development Commission and the MR staff. And if a similar project was proposed in another area of Central Avenue based on this amendment, it would not qualify. It would not meet this intent and would add an additional hurdle to the process. And so that was my concern, that with this amendment, it adds a layer of requirements that I don't think is necessarily a good idea and may add additional hurdles to seed that type of development, which I think is a really high-quality, excellent project that couldn't, similar things could happen in other places, but not with this amendment in place. That was my point.
Counselor Peña.
So this is actually for the staff. So I was putting, I put forward the amendment that kind of counters, the one that Counselor Sanchez put forth, because of the MXM. But I think what we're talking about here is that the, so I'm not necessarily in favor of even the one I was trying to put forward. I'm trying to put it forward as a concessionary amendment. But, so actually, since it's MXM, right now, what he's talking about is that it would affect even the area where the hubs are. Is that what he's saying? Mr. Stroger?
Mr. President, Counselor Peña, any zoning on the West Side that has MX, whether it's MXM, MXL, MXT, would have to comply with this requirement.
So that's why I was concerned with this amendment, because with the NRC changing it back to NRC, it protects the commercial, yet we wouldn't have to mess with the proposed MXM throughout the rest of the comp plan. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Next speaker is Chris Sidio, followed by Johnny Peña, and then Ron Bohannon.
Good evening, Council President Ike Benton, City Councilors. I'm here to just talk about Amendment U, and that I am in fully support of Amendment U, sponsored by Clarissa Peña, giving it six months to, 12 months to be evaluated by the, for consideration. As we know, tonight, you will be voting on it. And I would like to see that everyone who votes for Counsel U Amendment U also raise their hand for the vote, so I know who does vote for it and who does not vote for it, because I like to take, know who doesn't vote for it. Secondly, I think giving people more time and trying to rush this, I agreed with Counsel Sanchez last time to do a three-month delay on it, because every single Neighborhood Association that spoke last time requested at least 90 days to get more engaged with 19 different amendments last time, and you voted on 14 changes on the amendments. What is 90 more days going to do to this? To me, it's the City Council trying to rush it before the new administration comes in. But anyways, I do want to see that, I like to see that when you do vote on Amendment U, that there is a hand vote for that, so I can know who does not vote for it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, and we'll try to do a better job of that next time. Counselor Peña.
Mr. Sidio, first of all, I want to thank you for attending my father-in-law's services. That really meant a lot. Thank you for being there. But this isn't related to this. I just wanted to say thank you for your service, and to the rest of the veterans here, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Clarissa Peña. Appreciate it.
Next is? Next is. Thank you. Next is Mr. Peña, then Mr. Bohannon, and then Charisse Casada.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Johnny Peña. I'm the president of the Southwest Alliance of Neighbors, SWAN, and the West Central Community Development Group. We're two organizations that for, over the last two decades, we've been trying to get our fair share of commercial, we're here in support of Counselor Peña's Amendment T. We feel that it is very important that we are able to really push that, that commercial. If you look at our, our side of town, and specifically south of 40, west of the river, you know, when you look at the term red line districts, that is a fine example of a red line district. For all too long, you know, when you, when you look at it, you know, it's over 80% Hispanic in that, in that community, and we failed to have the basic amenities that the rest of the city is able to enjoy. So I urge you support in Counselors, Counselor Peña's Amendment T, and if there's any questions that be more than glad to answer. Thank you.
Next is Mr. Bohannon, and then Charisse Casada, and then Jim Weibel.
Thank you, Ron Bohannon, 5571 Midway Park Place. Again, I urge your support for the IDO in passage. On Amendment U, if you've got, you've got this structured correctly, so I think six-month effective date is good, because every year, we hope to see this back so that you can keep doing those amendments. So instead of doing, moving that effective date out 12 months, do it six months, and then at the year, every year, annual, you're going to be coming back here to do that. So literally, you've got a six-month review, and then a year from that, another six-month, another review. Concerning V and all the others, when you start looking at vertical versus horizontal mixed use, and that's what you're trying to do, it gets very complicated. So my suggestion is let the market work through what is appropriate on the West Side as far as commercial development. You have been talking vertical mixed use, and when you start getting into the banking aspects of vertical mixed use, it gets to be very complicated very quickly. So I think you want to be flexible and allow horizontal mixed use, and I think these are some of the amendments, as the plan evolves, as our society evolves, and we, as I've mentioned before, commercial is changing drastically. How we shop today is not even going to be what we're going to be shopping in 10 years from now, so I think you want to do that on flexibility. On V, on the SU-1 for site plans, this is exactly how we've started down the path again, and we want to get a consistent plan. And so if you start saying, okay, we're going to separate these rules out for different areas, then we're missing the point of the IDO. And, and so my suggestion is be consistent, and I still trust you guys. Thank you very much.
Next, Ms. Casada, then Mr. Weibel, and then Keith Meyer.
Good evening, President Benton and council members. My name is Charisse Casada, I'm a resident of District 3, president of Route 66 West Neighborhood Association, secretary of the Southwest Alliance of Neighbors, and the former secretary of the West Central Community Development Group. I'm here to support Counselor Peña's IDO amendments, T, U, and X, specifically in changing the zoning code from MXM back to NRC. We need to preserve these properties to help balance the job-to-housing ratio. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casada, Mr. Weibel, then Mr. Meyer, and then Larry Lapitz.
Good evening, President Benton and councilors, my name's Jim Weibel, I'm the immediate past president of Carnum, been here before. We, I, I'm here to essentially echo the comments that Ms. Renz Whitmore made at the beginning of the meeting, which were unexpected for me, I've had a lot of arguments with Michaela over the time, and so I thought she provided you a very good summary of why we're here today. With regard to Amendments E and X, I would just say that if a project can support a higher and better use, I, I think we talked about this a little bit last time, I think that you'll see the commercial development into a mixed-use project to, to support the highest and best you said it can provide, because the, then the project pays for itself more easily, it has a better benefit to the community, I think you see that in a lot of places. With regard to Amendment W and the East Gateway Sector Development Plan, I think we're seeing a lot of changes in, as Mr. Bohannon commented about, in the way goods and services are developed and delivered, and, and a lot of those retailers, gas stations especially, as they see gas not to be a product anymore, have to convert, and we're seeing that in some other markets, where they're expanding their envelope to provide more groceries and other services. And so if you start to, I think the unintended consequences of prohibiting those kinds of things may hurt you in the long run, so I would urge flexibility on that. Other than that, I'm just requesting your vote, you vote no on E, U, V, W, and X. Any attempt at manipulating the market, I don't think is really a good thing, I think we've got a good base IDO here. Thank you again for all your time and efforts on this, and I ask for your support, and yes, on the IDO.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Meyer, followed by Larry Lapitz, and then Gary Easter.
Commissioner Benton, councilors, my name is Keith Meyer, and I'm the past president of the Society of Industrial and Office Realtors, and I have also spoken here, and I, again, would reaffirm, we very much would ask that you vote on and approve the IDO tonight. We're very supportive of it, and a lot of hard work's been done, and I know that you'll make the right decision. I, with regards to tonight's amendments, I did want to, while I'm for the IDO, I'm, I would like to speak against Amendments E, U, V, X, and W. With regards to E and X, much has been spoken about, I guess the thing I would tell you is, the, the sponsors are passionate about bringing commercial development to the West Side, and I want to reaffirm, the commercial industrial, as I said, the commercial real estate community is equally passionate. We want to bring commercial development to the West Side, everybody as much as you do, create the jobs there. I can tell you that 12 commercial real estate brokers were in Dallas, Texas, last week at the International Council Shopping Center, I saw them there in Dallas, and they're all there on their, these are all independent contractors, they're paying out of pocket to be there, to be at that convention, their own travel expenses, and all they're trying to do is bring retail and dollars back to New Mexico. So I would tell you, we're working very hard on it, but trust the market, you won't get exactly what you want, but you'll get the results you want, it just takes time. So we ask that, rather than legislate it through E and X, because you won't get the results that the market allow, just let the market dictate that. Under Article, or Amendment V, candidly, this, when I read it, like, this is like Groundhog Day, you know, we're starting all over again. So would again ask that we, let's just go ahead and pass the IDO and not bring back the special-use district. And then lastly, on Amendment W, I represent Circle K, I can tell you that their standard build right now is over $3 million, and I think getting $3 million investment in the East Gateway Corridor would be a terrific thing, so I would advocate that you vote against Amendment W. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Lapitz, followed by Mr. Easter, and then Dan, I think it's Rieger.
President, council persons, I represent over 1,500 homes in the southwest mesa, and I will tell you that they feel very underserved in terms of retail and commercial. So I am in support, and have the support of others, for T and/or X. We need these things, and the idea that the commercial builders are going to do it when it's easier for them to put rooftops in there is already becoming a fallacy, because 258 more homes are being built just to the north of our, another 104, no, 400, I'm sorry, apartment buildings are proposed just to the south of us. They're not proposing putting in anything that we can shop at, or that we can work at. They're proposing putting in rooftops. So where do the people who live on the southwest mesa go for these things? They go to the other side of the city. The other side of the city has got these things. When is it going to be represented on the southwest side? I'm, again, saying, support T and/or X. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Easter, then Dan Regan, or Rieger, I'm sorry, I didn't, I can't read it, Reagan, excuse me, and then Govinda Haines.
Mr. President and council, I'd like to thank you, Counselor Benton, for sponsoring Amendment Y, Cottage Development Parking, and I've spoken with a number of colleagues and friends who ask you, the council, to, to pass Amendment Y tonight. I'd like to thank Counselor Davis for sponsoring Amendment Z, and same thing there, a number of people, and friends and neighbors I've spoken with ask that you support and adopt Amendment Z tonight. And then finally, I'd like to thank the council, along with many colleagues, friends and neighbors in Nob Hill, surrounding areas. We appreciate the fact that this approval and amendment process has been sensitive to a lot of community input, and we thank you, the council, we thank council staff for that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for participating. Dan Reagan, followed by Govinda Haines and Veronica Salinas.
President Benton and council members, I'm Dan Reagan, I am president of the Nap Heights Neighborhood Association. In my humble opinion, Amendment U is a clear indication that the IDO is not ready for prime time. To get to this place and this point, and have, as another gentleman mentioned, the vast majority of neighborhood associations say, this doesn't give us any voice in the same way. I commend Michaela, I've worked with her, I've, I've worked with her staff. We're at a place where, I'm not sure why, the night before a mayoral election, we're considering passing this after 40 years of living with what we had, and we think it needs to be passed tonight? I don't under, Mr. Bohannon and another gentleman said, this is really complicated, but let's let the market decide, let's let the market determine, let's, the changes in the IDO as currently expressed, remove influence, voice, and power from the neighborhood associations and the public. It flips it over to the development community. We need to have business. I am in favor of the adoption of the CP, I'm in favor of adoption of a revised IDO. The IDO is not where it needs to be right now. And the movement and the impetus to vote on it tonight, I have in the back of my mind a question, what are you afraid of? What are you afraid of with a 90-day extension? Thank you.
Next speaker is, next speaker is Govinda Haines, followed by Veronica Salinas, followed by Debbie Breen.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to support Amendment Z, put forth by Pat Davis. This would, this increases the step-down slightly between Copper Avenue, Copper Avenue is the dividing line in Nob Hill and Highland between the commercial activity and the residential districts, and this will provide a slightly different step-down and a better transition, and, and especially in Highland, where building heights are being raised 20 feet, if developers want an extra 20 feet, the very least they can do is provide a better transition to the single-story resident, historic residential that's there, and not block people's sun that are currently utilizing it. As far as the timeline for adoption, I would support a 90-day deferral. Specifically, I would support a 90-day deferral to address issues of historic preservation and community livability. For the first full one year of this IDO process, I've been involved for the whole process, the first full one year, we were told in no uncertain terms, by planning, that the purpose was not to change zoning. It was only to, they said, look, we have all these sector plans, we don't want to consolidate them. They said, we will not change your zoning, anything you care about, you can keep. After a year, they actually came out with the zoning, and of course, building heights, commercial building heights and the transition heights were all going up in Nob Hill, and we said, well, this must be a mistake. After six months of saying, you know, are you listening to us, we want what we had, then they came clean and said, we actually are changing zoning. And so this, so in Nob Hill, there's, I, I don't want to, I don't think we should repeat urban renewal of the 1970s, I think if we're going to have development, we should also think about preserving historic character. Nob Hill has currently no protections in, or, there's no new protections here, and there's very limited protections to preserve historic character in Nob Hill, and of course, we had a lot of historic character coming out of urban renewal, because we largely escaped it. So, so I would like to see a 90-day deferral to specifically address those concerns, and, you know, other concerns outstanding. Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, and Mr. Haines and Ms. Salinas, I just want to say thank you in particular to y'all's help. You know, we've gotten a lot of amendments that were suggested to us here, particularly from y'all's neighborhood association, but to have somebody who had spent the time to go back and to do the math, and to do the work, particularly on the, the neighborhood edge conditions and protecting solar, as you've seen, we have a new amendment tonight based on your work and working with our staff, so I think it's our third one to finally get to the place we need to be to do that work, and it's because y'all spent the time to do that with us, and I appreciate it. And I certainly support the opportunity, if the IDO passes, for us to do some neighborhood-specific meetings about those neighborhood-specific requests, like the historic pieces, that we need to continue to, to watch out for as the IDO gets, so thank, I wanted to say thank you for the very detailed volunteer work you did, because it was technical, you have a lot of expertise in it, and we appreciate it very much. Our, your neighborhood association is much better for it, so thank you both.
All right, Ms. Haines, followed by Ms. Salinas, followed by Debbie Breen.
Thank you, councilors. I'd like to speak, speak in support of Amendment Z, because I think it restores the buffer zones that we are losing, and that we lost. So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge, so when this whole process started two years ago, we were explicitly told that zoning was not going to change. When the zoning came out, we saw that commercial building heights in the Nob Hill area were going to, in the Nob Hill and Highland areas, were going to more than double in height. And so, and we were also losing of all of our transition zones, and so that was, those are the buffer zones, the, the, how the commercial building heights were stepping down to the residential zones. And so anyway, that, that galvanized our neighborhood, and I will acknowledge at this point that we are actually very fortunate in Nob Hill, that we have a large contingent of residents who are in a position to dedicate the time, the resources, and their talents to researching and providing really good feedback. And so, anyway, between all of the public meetings with residents and subcommittee meetings, meetings with residents, public meetings with planners, private meetings during office hours, coming to EPC, LUPs, and finally, the city council meetings, we have literally attended dozens of meetings, and probably put in, total residents have put in probably hundreds of hours. And so I just wanted to say that because of that, Pat Davis listened, and he got us in the end, was able to keep those building heights in our commercial district close to what they are, they're going up three feet in Nob Hill, but it's pretty close to what we have, so thank you, Pat, for listening to the neighborhood. They are going up two stories in Highland, and we are losing about 80% of our transition zones, but Amendment Z does restore some of that, and so I urge you to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Salinas, and then Ms. Breen, and then Jolene Woolley.
I was Veronica Salinas.
Oh, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon. Debbie Breen, Jolene Woolley, and then Sal Perdomo.
Hi, members, hello. I'm up off of Academy, Wyoming area, and we're not opposed to change, but we're not in favor of the IDO. And what we would like to ask you is an extension for the 12 months, up to the 12 months instead of the six months. It's apparent to me by members that are here, sitting in the backseats, that there's some people that have known about this for three years, they must be your commercial developers, because I promise you, the residents do not know. They haven't known about this. Everyone's in a state of confusion, because they want to know, why weren't we told about this? Why weren't we informed about this? I had a conversation with Petra, and we, we visit on this, and she assured me that this was in the media, it was in the newspaper. We've known nothing about this. And we're talking about people that are businesspeople, that are on their iPads, in the media, they're on their phone, their newspaper, no one knows anything about this. And it is, as a gentleman just brought up earlier, it is really suspicious that we're having to want to make a change and vote on this tonight, a day before election, with the new administration coming in. So I'm sure you think Tim Keller's going to be your next mayor, because why can't we delay this? Also- Also, we'd like to know, and maybe Petra can get with me later on this, the fifteen amendments that were passed, do we have an area to go to see what was passed? Because the last I heard, on the last discussion, November sixth, we were talking about the fifteen-foot variance. I don't know where that went, what happened to that. And we were having a discussion between eight to eighteen people per home. No discussion on that.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Next is Ms. Bream, then Ms. Woolley, then Sal Perdomo.
You need a backup line. I was Debbie Bream.
I'm sorry. I've got totally off here. So Veronica spoke, Debbie spoke. Did Govinda Haynes speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I'm just catching up here, sorry. So Ms. Woolley, Mr. Perdomo, and then Joaquin Baca.
Council President Benson and members of the city council, thanks for this opportunity to speak. I support Amendment V, which deals with the SU1 zoning. This amendment will help to make sure the IDO is more legally sound. There are two thousand parcels with this zoning, and those that have site plans approved represent set policy that has been approved by the EPC and developers and the neighborhoods. And many of these site plans set zoning, they exclude certain uses, they set maximum densities. Some of them only allow one use. And to do changes to that particular zoning in a broad-sweeping motion through the IDO, we have had the legal opinion that we presented to you that that is not legal and would be challengeable in court. I provided you examples where churches and private schools are being rezoned to business parks, non-residential commercial, which includes C3 uses, and MXM, which is intense mixed-use development. There are single-family neighborhoods near some of these properties, and it's just not fair to do that kind of rezoning through this legislative process. Second, what can we do in ninety days? One of the big ones is on the west side. The west side has the most vacant land, and it's where most of the growth is going to go. And it's also where the IDO is proposing the most change. I think there's still confusion even among the councilors about what is the best zoning conversions for a lot of the land. And to do this-- and a lot of these amendments that affect great swaths of land on the west side have only come up in the last three weeks. So the countless meetings have not really addressed that, and that's why we need ninety more days. We also need to look at design standards that have been lost through sector and other plans to help us make sure design is equal around the city and not just promoted for urban core, Main Street, and premium transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perdomo, then Joaquin Baca, then Matthew Sexton.
Good evening, Mr. President and councilors. My name is Sal Perdomo with Titan Development. I'm here to speak against Amendments E, U, V, and X. Amendments E and X will not entice more commercial development on the west side. It will simply inhibit growth and results in property owners requesting downzoning to get out of this requirement. I sent each of you an exhibit that specifically shows why this amendment is problematic for many properties on the west side, and it should be denied. Amendment U should also be denied. I believe it is unnecessary to push this timeframe to twelve months, and it should remain at six months. Lastly, Amendment V significantly undermines the IDO and is completely contradictory to the intent and purpose of the IDO. It will complicate and delay development and growth in our city. Please vote against Amendments E and X, U and V. And I also ask that you vote in favor of the IDO tonight. I do not believe it needs to be delayed any further. Thank you for everything you've done thus far. Please do not let it all go to waste. Thank you.
Mr. Perdomo, I do have a question. You mentioned with the-- I believe you were referring to the E or maybe E and X, and you mentioned something about people intentionally might be intentionally applying for downzoning in order to get around it. Could you explain that?
Yes, sir. So my understanding is that if, you know, let's say someone wants to build a multifamily development, and the property is not, you know, they're gonna be required to have a hundred percent or fifty percent ground floor retail, and they don't want to have that, you know, they can go through the IDO process and downzone on the conversion map. I believe the planning department is-- can do that for the next six months or year.
Okay.
That's my understanding. I certainly could be mistaken on the details.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Baca, followed by Mr. Sexton, followed by Mary Ann Dickinson.
Good evening, President Benson and councilor members. I'm the secretary treasurer for the Santa Barbara Martinez Town Neighborhood Association, as well as a member of the Albuquerque Interfaith. And just to mention, there have been two hundred signed petitions by the neighborhood association, and there are over four hundred members of the Albuquerque Interfaith that are in support of holding off on the vote tonight. But primarily, I would like to speak on Amendment U and address Counselor Peña in particular. Earlier was mentioned that over-- you do have to represent the entire city, over five hundred thousand people. And of that five hundred thousand, over two hundred thousand are Hispanic or Hispanic descent. And I would imagine of that number, quite a few speak Spanish solely. And so I would like to request that Amendment U be provided in Spanish before the vote is taken, if possible. I know there was a rushed process, or make sure that Amendment U is actually available because I think in particular that one has a large constituents of Spanish-speaking-only residents and would deserve to have access to that amendment in their language. But thank you very much for the time to speak tonight and--
Thanks for coming down to speak. Next is Mr. Sexton, followed by Ms. Dickinson, followed by Jerry Worrell.
Thank you, President Benson and councilpersons. I'm standing here to help, to encourage you to support Amendment Y. My wife and I want to raise our son in the kind of community that's made possible by the co-housing language in the IDO. A thousand square feet, you know, I think will work for my wife and I. We have one son, and we think it'll work for us. But I want to digress for a moment and tell you some of the things I've seen and what I want to come out of this IDO amendment. So some of the things I've seen in my life is I've seen the work of my hands blast off into space. This might sound kind of weird to you, but like that is one of the most beautiful things I've ever seen, is to see what it takes to put something into space and see that happen in front of me. And I've seen phosphorescence wash across, you know, the deck of a ship that I've been standing at the, you know, at the helm of as we're navigating across the Sea Cortez. You know, something like that has touched me, you know, for the rest of my life, I remember that. And I've also seen babies born. I worked in an ambulance, and I saw, you know, some sad things in the ambulance, but also you get lucky and you see things, you think you're the luckiest guy in the world. A week ago, I saw my son with several of his friends piled into this contraption in the playground. And I was pushing along, and they were screaming and yelling, having more fun. And that is actually the most beautiful thing I've ever seen. And that's what I want for my son. When I raise him in a co-housing community, I want his friends to be there. So that thousand feet that's in the co-housing language, it works for me and my son, but I want more kids there. And a lot of the people I know, they have two or three kids in their family, and they're just not gonna fit into a thousand square feet. Twelve hundred square feet, actually, it helps, you know, like I think we might get a few more peaceful people. I wish what you did is you made it sort of an average thing, so we could have small units to house aging parents, and we could have larger units that can put in, you know, two or three families. And hopefully, the whole thing would average out to something that's acceptable density. So I'm glad you got Y in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Dickinson, followed by Mr. Worrell, followed by David Pelletier.
Good evening, Mr. President and councilors. I'm also supporting the amendment Y because it will allow us to have some flexibility in these kind of intentional communities where we can have families. And this is a very traditional, really, way of doing family compounds and so forth. And it's-- I hope that more neighborhoods will welcome this sort of development. And I also want-- also, I support the Nob Hill building heights amendments, and I appreciate all the work on the Nob Hill area, which is still dear to my heart, even though I don't live there anymore. I did a lot of work on it. And finally, there's concerns about the solar access, and I'd like to bring up that I hope you don't think your work is done on that because our-- the way our solar ordinance works right now is an opt-in instead of an opt-out situation. And I'm feeling screwed, frankly, because I have a neighbor who doesn't want to look at my solar panels and is growing tall trees in front of them. And I can do nothing about it because most people I know didn't understand the way the process is supposed to work, and that doesn't really work for us. It's not the spirit of free access to solar. And I would like to voice my appreciation for the planning staff for these almost three years that I've been involved, and particularly Michaela, who I think deserves a medal. And I don't see any great purpose in continuing for twelve months, delaying for twelve months. I think that the-- I really do believe that the assessment and revision process will help us a lot and look forward to it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your engagement in the process. Mr. Worrell, followed by Mr. Pelletier, followed by Renee Horvath.
Evening, Mr. President, city councilors. I'm Jerry Worrell, president of the West Side Coalition. I can make a very good argument for why I want you to pass this tonight, and it's because I'm running out of a new shirt to wear each time I'm up here. But other than that, I can't think of a good reason why you should pass this tonight. And I think these amendments that we have in front of us are another example of that. I have six of you that are proposing changes tonight, which is almost, I think that's a supermajority, so. But it points out that we're not ready yet, and there are details. I don't know whether to support X. I don't know whether to support E. I've got two city councilors, okay? So I'm not quite sure where I want to be on this now because I do feel some responsibility for both sides of Central. We're now splitting Central down the middle, so I'm a little confused on where we're going on that. And I don't see the reason for the rush tonight to pass this. So again, as I've said many times, give us another ninety days. We'll keep working on this. And it just isn't on my side that I'm confused. If we're going to allow two parking places on a twelve hundred square foot property, which I think is being proposed tonight in that amendment, now if that was built prior to 2008, it's okay to park in the front, but where are we gonna put those two more parking places? And we need to go to the state to figure out how we're going to enforce anyway because we can't find when people are in opposition or have violated one of our city ordinances. We have to take them to court. We can't find them. So I'm a little confused, but that's all right. My two minutes are up. Good night.
Thanks. Thanks, Jerry. And just with regard to that parking, that has to do with the cottage development, type of development only, and those are the guest parking spaces. So not-- they're not directly related to any particular dwelling. So-- and I appreciate everyone from-- who was interested in the cottage and co-housing that worked with us. David Pelletier, followed by the last speaker, Renee Horvath.
Mr. President, councilors, I'm David Pelletier with E on signs, and I apologize. I thought there was going to be technical edits or an amendment tonight to reverse the language in the IDO that eliminates all pole signs and seventy percent of all the wall signs for businesses in the city of Albuquerque. But that's not here, so I'd be out of line to address that. Thank you.
And sir, I was interested in that and remain interested in it, and will need to, you know, kind of continue that during the six-month shakedown period of the, you know, after the IDO was adopted. So still very interested in that. We do have a history in the city of pole signs, and some of them are beloved. I just think of the Elvato sign, for instance, that, you know, some of them are historic and interesting signs. So we'll continue to work.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. And yes, Counselor Harris.
And this isn't a question, but just to tell this gentleman that I don't know what signs could be eliminated, but it's unconstitutional to actually require someone to take down their sign. So I mean, any-- so there might be a limitation on new signs, but if you have a customer that wants to put a sign in an existing box, I don't think the IDO changes that. And that wasn't a question, by the way. We're gonna work together. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Horvath.
Good evening. My name is Renee Horvath. I'm with the Taylor Ranch Neighborhood Association. Yes, I too support Amendment U and Amendment V. I think it is important that we increase the time from six months to twelve months to get a handle on this IDO. And also with Amendment V with SU1 sites, we have a lot of those SU1 sites right next to the river, and it does need a lot more review. We have new regulations that need to be looked at among traffic issues and the intensity of the development next to the river. So I would suggest that you vote for those. Also, in regards to the IDO and all this new zone conversions, NRC and MXM zones are still a concern for everyone. You know, it's like, should we do NRC? Should we do MXM? Because NRC zones is combining C2 and C3 uses, and those C3 uses may not be still, even though we addressed the adult retail, I believe. There's still some concern that we may be getting some incompatible uses right next to residential. And then the MXM zones are a lot of density and a lot of tall buildings, which really, nobody's really crazy about, especially on the west side, because we have traffic issues and we don't need all that density. We do need more jobs. So we never really sorted this out. Through all these meetings, we didn't realize what we were getting until recently, and that's why we bring up these concerns, and that's why we'd like more time. In addition, I still think we should keep our sector plans because we need them. We have a lot of development on the west side, and our sector plan has new regulations that we need. And the new regulations in the IDO is not gonna work. It's not strong enough. There's some things that we need to deal with. And so that's why I don't know why we're rushing it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the bills, and we'll start with Committee Substitute 049. I'll move a do-pass.
Seven.
There's a motion and a second for a do-pass. This is the bill with the amendments, so we will get started with those. And again, staff can answer any questions, but we'll start with a little bit out of order in the-- from the cover sheet since they're related. But we'll start with Counselor Sanchez, which is the amendment labeled E, and that is the one that was explained that needs to be chosen between that one and amendment labeled X, sponsored by Counselor Peña. And I'll just say upfront that I've said all along that with regard to some of these issues, I certainly defer to my fellow councilors. It makes it harder when they're not in full agreement themselves. But we'll start with Counselor Sanchez and then have Counselor Peña.
And I will yield just briefly to staff to go over the amendment one more time. And also, I think you need to reiterate the change in this amendment because the business community has made some comments regarding not supporting either E or X. But we did make some major modifications in E that I think would be supportive of the business community, at the same time cautious of the changes in the land use and mixed uses in the categories that we are looking at. Go ahead, proceed.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I actually wanted to ask, is there any way that we could-- I guess the president's not here-- is if we could start with T? Because for me, this is kind of the whole historical process of this. This area was actually along west central. Some of the areas within the IDO were NRC. And through an amendment that was passed at the LUPs, it converted it to MXM. So this conversion has actually created this division in terms of the MXM. So I think that if we were to look at T first, we could actually then-- So I think that if we were to look at T first, we could actually then, if T were to pass, I actually wouldn't even be interested in introducing X.
Thank you, Councilor Pena. Councilor Sanchez, do you have any issues with that, just starting with Amendment T?
I've worked very closely in the past with Councilor Pena and members of the Southwest Alliance of Neighbors and the West Side Coalition. One of the concerns I have even with T is it's basically anything south of I-40. And one of the things that we have now in Albuquerque and on Albuquerque's West Side is $30 million of improvements along the West Central corridor with the new art project. And that's why I support more of a mixed-use concept along those corridors because of the importance of the $30 million of investment to Albuquerque's West Side. I think this also restricts any, it would be basically, you know, mixed uses only in those corridors where you've got the bus stops where people can develop mixed use, but it would restrict everyone else that has property along that corridor from doing so. So I do have questions regarding also that amendment. Councilor Pena, I just feel that we would restrict and limit development along that entire corridor.
Councilor Pena.
Mr. President, the only reason I say that is because I think with the MXM is that what we do by making these amendments, X, one that I really didn't want to make, but if T were not to pass, I think that I would need to have something to protect the commercial part of it, which I think is your intent as well. But when we're talking about the MXM, we're actually talking specific to the entire West Side. So that's where my concern would be. So with the NRC, there was an analysis done, and with the NRC, back to what it was originally, because it came out of, it was actually only changed into at LAPS. But with the NRC, the parcels that we're talking about are really small parcels of property. They're not even something that I think, that if you look from Central, between Attrisco and 53rd, there's only one to two acres that are available to do these types of developments. Between 53rd and Coors, there's some undeveloped parcels between one and two acres. Between Coors and Unser, there's one to two acres. You know, so these are actually really small parcels of property. You know, I think the vision for the community, you know, is to preserve that commercial, that commercial aspect, and this would really give us an opportunity to kind of bring back some of what it used to look like. Because if you recall, you know, you look at Nob Hill, and it actually used to look a little bit like West Central until all of those buildings got demolished along the way. So, I mean, I'm fine starting with E, but I would prefer to start with T.
Councilor Sanchez, I'll leave that up to you.
I'd like to go ahead and look at item E. We've already started with that. And I just feel the importance of item E, and with the amendment that I have placed in there, I think that it provides an opportunity, especially with $30 million of investment by the city of Albuquerque with its art project, that we have an opportunity to transform that entire corridor. And anytime you have a mass transit corridor, you know, we want to try to get more mixed uses in those corridors to encourage more development. We've had the MRA in place since 2004. It's been 13 years, and it's been a challenge to improve that area. I know that Councilor Pena and myself and the community has come together, and now we, you know, we had Pro Ranch Market, which has now changed hands. That's been a great development. Right across the street where the Kmart used to be, that has come to life. So we are getting more retail, and I definitely support additional retail development. But at the same time, with the, you know, the new corridor coming into place and the investment by the city, I'd really like to see more mixed uses so we can really develop that corridor. And I think this is the perfect opportunity to do so, because come 2018, the art project will be operational, and I think people will be looking to Albuquerque's West Side to develop.
And Councilor Sanchez, you know, would you address the statement that was made by one of the speakers about the difficulty of, this is more of a, kind of a practical matter of banking and so forth, but I think it was stated by Mr. Bohannon that the, with regard to the loan environments and so forth and banking environments where this vertical mixed use, if we were to require this?
Well, basically, I think what happens, what is going on today, and with the current IDO in place, and we don't move these amendments, what will happen in any C1 or C2 zoning, the developer can develop 100% residential without a commercial component. I felt this was a compromise bill that would allow for commercial development. And as far as banking, I think if you've got a good plan, you present that plan to the banks, they are going to be willing to lend that money to the developer to develop that, their community or their land. But again, I think it restricts us if we limit that to 100% residential use or 100% commercial use. But I think this gives us the flexibility to incorporate both mixed use with commercial development.
And, yeah, I mean, part of the reason I ask that is just in recent years, even in the affordable housing community, which I've been a big part of working with, they've, they're finding ways to do these mixed-use developments and to finance them. So it's, you know, it seems like in that very competitive and restrictive environment, if they can figure out ways to do it, as was done, for instance, downtown in the Imperial Building and some of the buildings over in the sawmill, that we should be able to do it in the private sector.
And that's what we are looking at doing with the Unser Central Project, where you've got, yes, housing, along with my essence and word, wanting to develop that property.
Thank you. Councilor Pena, would you like to just continue the discussion? I think, you know, we do want to hear about, you know, your thinking on T and X as well in order to be able to fully digest Amendment E.
So again, my concern specific, obviously, to the Southwest area, as many of you know, you know, we have 71% of residential zoning in our area, you know, so we really lack retail. So I know that the West Central Group and Swan have worked tirelessly to try to enhance West Central and to ensure that we preserve those commercial areas. And when we're talking about the MXM, you know, I just did this as a reaction to losing the NRC and actually, through that amendment, it went to the MXM. And my concern with that is that, you know, again, back to T, is that if we just left it NRC and left the MXM the way it is, well then, you know, the developers have this opportunity to do what they need to do in order to make the project work. Again, the NRC on West Central, it preserves the commercial. And then in addition to that, with the MXM throughout the corridor on West Central, we, one of the issues that we have is that, you know, we're doing a new visitor center on top of Nob Hill, and, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do with the corridor as a whole is really to protect the character of the corridor, preserve the views that we have, and to address the jobs to housing imbalance. I mean, that's a really big issue. We really just don't have, you know, and I know this would only allow, along with Central, would only allow for smaller retailers, but those are jobs, and those are places where, you know, our teens can go to work and be employed. And again, with E, I guess I would still be concerned as to where the 50%, when we're talking 50%, we're not talking 50% of the entire floor. We're talking 50% of just the facade. So with these, with this amendment, it would only address, and that's why I added, if it was going to pass, that's why I added the 100%, because that's only 100% of the facade. And if you look at the properties that I described earlier, one to two acres, that's really not that much, doesn't require that much space for retail, but yet then we would lose the heights and have all that additional, that additional housing along the corridor, which I agree with Councilor Sanchez. I know that, you know, it's a premium transit corridor, and, you know, you really want to encourage density. Well, we have density. We have density in the Southwest area of the city. You know, what we need to do is, especially even along the corridor, there's a lot of density. There's just adjacent to, between old Coors and new Coors, there's 2,000 homes in just that adjacent neighborhood to the south, and another, I think, 1,800 homes just to the, to the, to the north of that. And when you look at it and addressing the premium transit corridor and the MXM in those stops, I think that's where we address, you know, the additional burden of the housing that's needed for the area for, to sustain growth. But right now, you know, I've been talking about this since the beginning, and even with the art project, is if you look at the Southwest area of the city of Albuquerque, we have, most of the city's entrepreneurs come from the Southwest area of the city, and lots of them, you know, I hear this all the time, they really don't have a place to open a small mom and pop shop. So they're looking through to other areas of the cities to do that. And in addition, you look at the millennials in the city of Albuquerque, and most of the millennials in the city of Albuquerque actually live in the Southwest area of the city of Albuquerque. So, you know, we really, some of the same things that we're doing in Nob Hill and by Real Grand, which I think you guys have done an awesome job, we need to start to create some of that sense of community and retail in a place in our area.
Councilor Davis.
Mr. President, I apologize. Just a point of order. Do we have an amendment or an item that we're on at this point?
We're on Amendment E.
Are we on E? Okay.
And, you know, if this were to pass, it would be Amendment Number One. The somewhat complicated factors are that X is essentially a competing amendment to E, and then also, Councilor Pena is saying that T ties into it as well from her perspective, so that's why we're kind of talking about all three.
And Mr. President, if I may, just ask staff, you know, I certainly understand how E and X are competitive. I think, I hear Councilor Pena's argument, how T layers in it, but if I could ask our planning staff to give us maybe a more technical answer or a more nuanced answer about how those might interact with each other, would be really helpful for me.
Yeah, Mr. President, Councilor Davis, I'd be happy to. So first, I'm going to go over E and X and talk about what the major differences between those are. And the first is where those amendments would be applicable. E would only be applicable on major and premium transit corridors west of the river. And those roadways are Coors Boulevard, pieces of Aranal, Bridge Boulevard, Central Avenue, Paseo del Norte, and Montano. So any property that is abutting, those roadways that has mixed-use zoning, 50% of the primary facade on the ground floor would need to be commercial. As compared with Amendment X, which applies only to Central Avenue, so properties abutting Central Avenue that have mixed-use zoning would need to have 100% of their primary ground floor facade contain a commercial component. So the two major differences are where they're applicable and also the percentage of the primary ground floor facade.
And Mr. President, Ms. Schultz, how would T interact with those if we passed, say, E, for example?
It's a great question, Mr. President. Councilor Davis, T would take away some of the mixed-use zoning that's on the West Side. So if T were to pass and E or X were to pass, it would make E or X less applicable on the West Side, because there would be less mixed-use medium zoning.
And to follow that, follow up with that, so essentially, this T would exclude Council District Three from, it's pretty much the same, isn't that, as this, as the way this reads? With I-40, actually, I guess I take it back, south of Central, or between Central and I-40 would be a different condition.
Mr. President, the way the amendment is drafted, everything south of I-40 would be affected. So there are...
So there would be no, no mixed-use zoning?
Not quite. There is, there is existing MXT and MXL zoning scattered throughout the Southwest area.
Right.
And there is MXM zoning within 660 feet of the premium transit stations that exist there today, the art stations, and those would not be affected regardless of what happens with Amendment T.
All right. Councilor Harris.
Thank you. And since we're talking about T, even though E is what we're on the table, could I have a, an explanation from staff on T exactly, because I heard it from Councilor Pena, but I think I'd like to hear from staff also, and a little bit more in depth in terms of what actually happened, what this does.
Mr. President, Councilor Harris, sure. It's going to take a little bit of history to get us there, but I'll do it quickly.
Please.
When the IDO first came out, properties that were zoned C2 east of the river were given MXM zoning. That was the equivalent zoning. If you had a C2 or C3 property west of the river, you were given NRC zoning. The difference between those is NRC zoning does not allow for a residential component at all, while as MXM would allow townhouses, apartments, et cetera. The kind of policy decision behind that was that the comprehensive plan guides the city to try to address the jobs housing imbalance. And we tried to do that through zoning by saying, we are going to preserve more of the zoning on the West Side for commercial development. There was community concern from folks on the West Side about that conversion for a couple of reasons, primarily because the NRC zone does combine C2 and C3 uses. So if you had a C2 property on the West Side that received the NRC designation, you also now had C3 uses. They got a bit of an upzone that contains uses that weren't very favorable to some of the neighbors. And so through the LAPS process, we tried to pare back the number of parcels on the West Side that would receive that NRC designation. And the way that was done is we said, for C2 or C3 properties that are a designated shopping center, that's a designation under today's current system, those would be converted to MXM. Or if you had a parcel that was under five acres, instead of receiving NRC, you would get MXM. So the parcels that are over five acres on the West Side will still remain NRC if this amendment doesn't pass, but shopping centers and anything under five acres would be converted to MXM.
All right. Thank you. So we need to go back to, I think at this point, this is a matter of procedure to vote on Amendment E. Councilor Sanchez.
First, I'd like to introduce it. I'd like to introduce for Amendment Number One to Exhibit A to O-17-49.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second for Amendment E, and this would be Amendment Number One. Any further discussion? Councilor?
Heard your support.
All right. All those in favor of Amendment E, say yes and raise your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
And that passes on a eight-to-one vote.
Seven-to-two.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Didn't see your hand. Eight, seven-to-two vote, that passes. And so then we'll move to Amendment labeled T, Councilor Pena. And this is the one that was just explained by staff. Is there any other discussion on Amendment T? And this would be, if passed, this would be Amendment Number Two. All those in favor say yes and raise your hands. And there are two votes in favor, opposed?
No.
And that fails on a two-to-seven vote. Now move on to Amendment labeled U. Again, this would still be Amendment Number Two if passed. This is the increased effective period. Councilor Pena.
This is just, you know, saying that when the IDO goes into effect, I think there's a lot of glitches and things that we're going to have to address and ensure that all the staff has the appropriate training and, you know, they're going to have to go out and talk to community members and ensure that they've received all the information. So I just thought that, you know, it seems as though it's the will of the council to get this done, so I thought that this would be an opportunity for us to have a little bit more time, not to change the IDO, but to actually, you know, provide all the community outreach needed and staff training. And I don't know if the staff wants to add to that.
Staff, any comments?
Mr. President, councilors, Amendment U would increase the effective period, as Councilor Pena said. Other communities that have gone through a similar process to this in adopting an integrated development ordinance, they all have an effective period, but those effective periods really range from three months, so super fast, to about a year and a half. And so the six months that we have is somewhere in the middle. One year is also not completely crazy and out there. The increased timeframe would allow additional time for the planning department to work on the Citizens Academy. The Citizens Academy is a process proposed that would provide an opportunity for the planning department to educate the development community... for the planning department to educate the development community, neighbors, residents, the public in general about the development process, including the IDO, as well as training staff. That additional year would also provide, sorry, additional six months would provide additional time for any issues that were raised to be amended. There is two potential issues, though. There are follow-up items that will not begin until after the IDO becomes effective. One of those is Resolution 240, the follow-up voluntary zone map amendment process. That would not begin until the IDO went into effect. So that would put that out at an extra six months. And it would also delay the CPA process, the community planning assessments. Those would not begin until two years after the effective date. So that would also push those out an additional six months.
So effectively, since during this time period, the council can entertain changes, right, and can propose alterations to the overall document without having to go through EPC and the whole lengthy process that we've taken to get to where we are today with the IDO, correct?
Mr. President, yes, that's correct.
And so this would extend that time, double that time effectively under this amendment, but we wouldn't be able to start the CPA process and we wouldn't be able to start the voluntary rezoning process. There would be nothing to prevent the council from extending this time at a later date, would there be? If we saw that we weren't getting where we needed to be?
Mr. President, that's correct. Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to make that clarification as well, just to be sure that if we get to the five months and two weeks and we feel like there's something that's not yet accomplished, this council could, by amendment or by new ordinance or resolution, extend that farther. I also want to just ask Ms. Morris, based on your experience with this, will staff have the time enough to do the work that's necessary, both to create the Citizens Academy to get ready? And in your opinion, would the planning staff or y'all help us have sufficient time to help us arrange, say, district, city council, district-based meetings with neighborhoods on sort of what the final IDO is and the process for entertaining those additional perhaps suggestions along that process? Is six months long enough for us to get all that staff to do all that work?
Mr. President, Counselor Davis, as that's a question about roles that the planning department will be taking the lead on, I'll defer to them on that.
Someone from planning want to tackle that one? Mr. Brito.
Mr. Brito, thank you. It's my, I just want to clarify. I've heard from staff that said that they felt like the six-month period was time enough to get all those accomplished, but I want to just clarify that you think that's the case, given sort of the capacity of the planning department transferring from the team that's developing this now to the team that has to implement it. Does that sort of compare?
Mr. President, Counselor Davis, Counselors, the planning department is prepared to reach out to neighborhood associations, to builders, to designers, and to staff to make sure that everyone is trained. We're already thinking about how that would shake out in terms of regular training sessions at the Plaza del Sol building in our hearing room, as well as offering area-wide training sessions, either by council, district, as you mentioned, or perhaps through the community planning areas at community centers, at churches, schools, et cetera, wherever it's most accessible to those who are interested. So yes, we believe we can do this in the six months.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you. And I don't think I have a question right now, Mr. Brito, but just working as long as I have in government and being up here and before, when I spent years at a government agency, I can almost predict that in April there's going to be some sort of resolution delaying it 30 days or 60 days. I'd be surprised and pleasantly surprised if we don't have something like that come up. My concern is that if we give it a year, we're going to be here in 11 months with that motion. And my concern also is that the consultants told us that we have some of the worst zoning in the country, and for that reason, I think we need to, for the sake of our city, get an approved zoning ordinance in places as soon as reasonably possible.
Other discussion? All right, seeing none. There was a, you moved the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. And is there, was there a second on the amendment?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the amendment labeled U. This would be Amendment Number Two if passed. All those in favor say yes and raise your hand.
Yes.
All those in favor say yes and raise your hand. Opposed? No? And that fails on a two-to-seven vote. We'll move to Item V, as in Victor. This is the SU1 site plans. Counselor Sanchez.
I think I will also turn this over to staff just briefly to go over this and make some comments.
Mr. President, Counselor Sanchez, Amendment V, SU1 site plans. The IDO, as drafted, requires that SU1 site plans remain in place. However, it does provide the option that a property owner can also develop either under their approved SU1 site plan or under straight zoning. But there is no public hearing for this. There is concern from the community that the SU1 zone site plans, they've received extensive public inputs on the properties. They are often sites that are sensitive in some way or have an unusual mix of uses and that to allow a property to convert from SU1 zoning to the straight zoning without a public hearing process is a concern. This amendment would require properties that have SU1 zoning that is in effect before the adoption of the IDO and, sorry, in effect before the effective date of the IDO and that the site plan is approved, that they go to the EPC if they wish to have site plan with the straight zoning from the IDO, so to converse away from their SU1 site plan.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Gibson.
I just want to make sure, because I thought I understood it, because we just talked about that before the meeting. That is if there's a major change to the plan, right?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, this would be if somebody wished to develop their property differently from how the SU1 site plan that's approved.
Okay, so a different site plan is what I'm hearing?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. But otherwise, if you're going to use the same site plan, you've already gone through all the steps previously, you just continue on?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, yes, that's correct.
So it's elective on the part of the property owner to either go with their existing approved plan or go with the new zoning under the IDO, which, and this would be consistent with zoning of similar properties in the surrounding area? Is that, that's the way these, these have been mapped in the same way that other properties have been mapped?
Mr. President, yes, that's correct. The, this would be if a property owner wished to develop under the straight zoning rather than the site plan that has been approved.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, if I may. So the major change that would happen is if they are zoned under the SU1 and they go forward, they can just go forward because they're already approved. If they change to a different plan, that's a different zoning, then they have to go before the EPC. So the major difference is that they now have to go through at least one more process before they can get approved. Is that, am I close to right on that?
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, yes, that's correct. So for example, if you had a property that had straight O1 zoning, they would convert to MXT. If you had a property with SU1 for O1 zoning and they had an adopted site plan, they could either adopt, develop under their site plan or they could develop under the straight MXT zone. And if this amendment passed, to develop under the straight MXT, they would need to go back to the EPC for their site plan to be reviewed, rather than an administrative approval.
And Counselor Gibson.
So how, how is this going to either inhibit or enhance competition? And do you think, does it give somebody an unfair advantage? I guess that's what I'm wondering now. Any thoughts on that?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, properties that have SU1 zoning under this amendment, if they wanted to do something different from their approved site plan, they would have an additional step to go through, and that would be the EPC approval, rather than developing, somebody with straight zoning just going straight for a site plan administrative approval.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is obviously complicated, my friend. So let me go back to what I think it says. So if they choose to use their straight zone, they have, in fact, higher design standards so the neighbors will still be protected. They'll still be protected because the design standards are in place, even though they don't have to go before EPC.
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, yes, that's correct. The IDO has higher development standards in it. And so the thinking behind the IDO as drafted is that, yes, you would be coming in with straight zoning, but you will be meeting a higher level of development standard. And also, it should be noted that the IDO has more notification than the zoning today. All site plans, whether approved administratively or by the Development Review Board or by the Planning Commission, neighborhoods are notified of this. And so that site plan administrative approval, that would, the neighborhoods would be noticed of that and they would have an opportunity to weigh in on that site plan and to share their opinion with the planning department and for the planning department to consider that in their decision.
Counselor Jones.
If I may summarize, the neighborhoods will not be bypassed either way we do this.
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, that's correct.
Thank you.
And I have to follow up because there were some statements made about the legal aspects of this. So I'll ask Mr. Melendez, perhaps Mr. Tebow, to weigh in on that. You know, the statements that this has some legal implication with regard to this option being added to a property who is a holder of an SU1 permit.
Mr. President, it was mentioned, if I'm picking up the right kind of suggestion that you're talking about, it was mentioned that there was a thought that this type of change would make the conversion of SU1 more lawful than as currently proposed. I've reviewed that with city legal and we don't believe that that's the case. The current SU1 conversion is appropriate under the process and standard of the IDO in general, this general conversion process of attempting to find parity under the converted IDO zones, at least a rough parity to what current zoning is under the current zoning code. And the process that's being employed, this legislative process, is appropriate as applied to the SU1 zones. I have spoken significantly about this with legal and I think it'd benefit the council to also hear from the city legal department's position on this.
Mr. Tebow. Counselor Harris, just a second, Mr. Tebow. Go ahead.
Mr. President, members of the council, in essence, there's an additional process being placed on a specific category of zone properties, the SU1 properties. The, whether or not it is more legally sound to pass this amendment versus not pass this amendment and pass the IDO is not a question that could be answered today. Whether individual property owners will be placed into a situation where they then have an additional step that they have to follow to acquire comparable rights and outcomes as adjacent property owners, who, for example, may have comparable zoning but are not SU-designated zone parcels, is really the issue that this amendment raises. In other words, two adjacent property owners conceivably, one with SU1 for a particular use, one with that use already provided through the zoning code, will have, in two different processes that they'll have to follow. And so the legal significance of that is relevant for consideration. Whether or not that creates legal soundness or unsoundness, though, is beyond the scope of what we could provide to you tonight.
And one additional question that I have about it. With regard to, I guess this question has to do with, were this to pass and these would be going to EPC? What would EPC be hearing with regard to the impacts of an owner choosing to not use their SU1 plan and use the new zone? What would be the subject matter of that hearing for the EPC? And should this be something, if we were to pass something like this, that we would need to give more direction to the EPC as to how they could hear that? How they would go about hearing it?
Mr. President, members of the council, I'll defer to my colleagues who are more the policy-focused. I can give you the legal implications of this, and I hope I have addressed that question.
Thank you. Mr. Melendez.
Mr. President, generally, when we think about sending stuff to the EPC, it's because there are some discretionary factors involved in maybe determining how a policy, a relevant land use policy should play out specifically as it applies to a site. Potentially, there are discretionary components within the zoning code about if X factor exists, then a certain requirement or condition should be imposed. With respect to this type of site plan, that type of discretionary review would not exist. This amendment is less about the boxes that would have to be checked and more about who would check those boxes. So the site plan requirements would be the same for the property. The question is whether or not it would be reviewed administratively by planning staff, by the DRB, for example, or by the EPC. And effectively, this amendment would make these types of site plans that are proposing to develop under a straight IDO zone reviewable by the EPC for the same type of relatively non-discretionary review process that a building official or planner would do administratively.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Jones.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Melendez, whomever, I think Mr. Melendez. So if they were basically, they could do the same thing, except that now because they are a little different, not in what they're doing, but because of the zoning that SU versus. So they'll have to go before the EPC. Does not the EPC, because now it's a human thing, not an administrative of, this is the rule, we're following it, does that now take away the predictability that is one of the reasons we embarked on the IDO however many years ago we started this?
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, potentially, and that's in that there's certainly a greater timeframe involved. An administrative review is relatively faster just by virtue of the fact that a public meeting isn't required and the nature of the comment is not necessarily at a public meeting that the EPC is reviewing. EPC members are not the technical-level staff that the city hires professionally. Certainly other costs involved. And I don't know if there's a different potential for appeal, but the nature of the appeal could certainly change, which could be more time-consuming and lessen predictability. So I would say those are the factors that would be involved in the changing who reviews the site plan from staff to the EPC.
All right. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Tebow, you made a comment regarding comparable properties with the new zoning code, the IDO, if it goes into place. That has not gone into place yet, and currently, anybody coming in for an SU1 is basically given a privilege to use that property for a specific use of zoning, if it's C1 or C2, but it basically is a special use permit. Is that correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Sanchez, it is a special use designation. It's a catch-all. From a legal perspective, the word privilege is not necessarily applicable for that. The zoning decision to, for example, for a parcel owner to acquire an SU zoning can be a voluntary decision. In some cases, that can be on the basis of the developer of that parcel wanting to have certainty for what their future obligations and outcomes will be. So, from that perspective, SU is viewed as special, but inherently, it's simply a, a way that we categorize parcels of land.
But in many cases, when somebody comes in for an SU permit, they've come in because they don't meet the zoning requirement of that particular development they're looking at doing, both in the city and the county. That's gone on for decades. So, I'm thinking, in believing, that in this particular case, I still believe that a SU permit is a privilege that is given with conditions. And with that, I don't find, I don't find it objective to go in and ask for an additional hearing by the EPC to look at some of these changes. They want to go ahead and conform with the IDO. They have every opportunity. But we are dealing with over 2,000 special use permits today in Albuquerque. That's SU1 cases. And that is my big concern. I think that we have a legal challenge also in the opposite direction that you were talking about, is that the community may come out and file a lawsuit against the city because of the number of SU cases that are now in place, because their designation will change, and it could change drastically with the new IDO in place. At least with the EPC process, they've got to go through a process to get the change completed, and that would be through the EPC process. What we are trying to do is just to add the additional layer to avoid the lawsuits, potentially, with the City of Albuquerque.
Thank you. Counselor Sanchez, that sounds like a close.
That can be a close, with your support.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of Amendment V, say yes and raise your hands?
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
No? And that fails on a 6-3. All right. Then we'll move on to Amendment W, East Gateway Fuel Sales. Counselor Harris?
And if this passes, is this still going to be Amendment 2?
Yes.
Okay. And I might have staff clarify something for me, but talking about fuel or gas stations in the East Gateway area, which is actually, stretches over two districts, Council District 9 and Council District 6, I counted, I think there are 14 service stations on a three-mile stretch of road currently, and the goal of redevelopment of, of East Central and the sector plan, a lot of times when we're talking about our meetings, it was to make East Central, if we can, more of a seam, not a barrier between neighborhoods. And that's the kind of use that is more, you know, consistent with being a barrier, cars coming and leaving, not sort of a community development. But I think I want to ask the planning staff to, to be clear, that I think that initially in the IDO, that these were going to, the gas stations were going to be completely prohibited in these uses, and it was amended out. Can you explain how that, that worked?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, the East Gateway Sector Plan prohibit, has a number of prohibited uses, and one of those is light vehicle fueling stations or gas This prohibition was not carried over initially with the IDO. The IDO initially had a different, fueling stations in different zones. The amendments during LUPs made light vehicle fueling, changed it to, from prohibited to conditional in the MXL zone. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure if that affected this East Gateway area, but certainly the conversion map as, as proposed, the zones that are proposed for the area's zones, CAC and NAC, those gas stations that are currently prohibited would become permissive uses under the IDO. And so, this amendment would add a mapped area for these two, these particular zones, CAC and NAC. This is consistent with how other sensitive uses are treated in the IDO. In the use-specific standards, we do have mapped areas that identify parts of town where a particular use is either allowed or not allowed due to certain characteristics, and this would just reflect that.
Okay. And Counselor Davis and I did talk about this. We actually talked about maybe with drive-ups and restaurants, we decided not to prohibit those. So, there's a lot of upzoning in the East Gateway. This is one of the only things that we kept. And, and actually, if the IDO had passed as initially provided to us, I think this would have been prohibited anyway. So, it's, it's a very small prohibition in, in an area which just doesn't need any more gas stations. We have about five per mile, on average.
All right. You want to move the amendment?
Do I move floor amendment number 2?
There's a motion and a second for floor amendment number 2. This is the amendment labeled W. All those in favor, say yes and raise your hands? Yes? Opposed? And that passes on a 7 to 1 vote. We'll move on to the amendment number, labeled Y. This would be floor amendment number 3. I'll move floor amendment number 3. And this is the cottage development parking requirement that was discussed, and also the upping the maximum size from 1,000 to 1,200 square feet, which, back in the good old days, people would build 1,200-square-foot four-bedroom houses. That probably less heard of nowadays, but I would think that in a cottage development, it would be doable and, and certainly appropriate. And this, the, the intention of that, again, as was described by one of the speakers, would be to allow families in a cohousing or in a cottage development, more, more larger families, I guess, with, with maybe more than one child, as opposed to a 1,000-square-foot, which is closer to a two-bedroom house. So, that's what that is about. I did take to heart, one of the speakers, he was talking about that we should do this based on number of dwelling units, and that's something I think we could certainly evaluate more as we go forward here. Fact is, we've only had one significant development of this type recently, of a modern type. We've had some that, that were proposed as SU1s, but, you know, we're, we're not this type of, specifically this type of development, so I'd urge your support. I, I think I moved, I'll move, move, I moved it, and there, was there a second? Yeah, thank you, from Counselor Davis. So, all those in favor, say yes and raise your hand? Yes? Opposed? And that passes. Next is, I, this would be, that was amendment number 3. This would be amendment number 4, and that's Z, the Nob Hill Buildings Heights. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move item Z as amendment number 4.
There's a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll let the staff get into the technical details if someone has a question, but essentially, this is sort of a cleanup from an amendment that we heard in the last council meeting that was adopted by this council. As we heard, we're just continuing to look at the best ways to find the neighborhood edge between expanding residential, or expanding residential areas and expanding commercial development along Central. Copper Avenue, for most of us who know, is one street back, or in some cases, almost two full blocks back from Central, and trying to find the appropriate edge between increasing commercial development and residential neighborhoods. And as we heard tonight, this is now supported by those neighborhoods, thanks to their input, and so I'd urge your support.
All right. There's a motion and a second for floor amendment number 4, labeled Z, in your packets. All those in favor, say yes and raise your hands? Yes? Opposed? And that passes. And now, next would be floor amendment number 5. This is labeled Double A in your packet, and these are the technical edits described by staff. I'll move floor amendment number 5. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions for staff on this? If not, all those in favor, say yes and raise your hand? Yes? Opposed? And that passes. And that gets us back on the bill, Committee Substitute, oh 49. Counselor Penney?
I didn't know when the, thank you, Mr. President. I didn't know when the appropriate time was, so I figured I'd wait till after the amendments had been passed, but actually, since my amendment, or item T, didn't pass, I actually had an additional amendment that I would like to introduce. And if the staff can just start explaining it. And this actually falls into the Counselor, you'd like to defer to the Counselors that represent the area. And, and when you're talking about this amendment, can you address, I think you talked earlier about when that NRC would be applied, and you talked about Arenal and Bridge and Central, some of the main areas that it would be affected?
Mr. President, Counselor Penney, I'd be happy to go over this amendment. This amendment is very similar to amendment T that did not pass tonight. It changes where those changes back to NRC would become applicable, whereas amendment T contemplated changing the NRC zoning south of I-40 back to MXM, I'm sorry, other way around. The zoning south of I-40 that was changed to MXM during LUPs back to NRC, this amendment proposes to make those changes only for properties that are on the, that are south of Central. This would lower the scope in which the number of properties that would be changed back to NRC. Counselor Sanchez had concerns about properties along Central Avenue being converted to NRC. What this amendment would do was allow, would allow the north side of Central to retain its MXM zoning, but the properties on the south side of Central and for the rest of the Southwest Mesa, they would get the NRC zoning that was originally proposed in the IDO.
All right. So, you want to go ahead and move that amendment? This would be number 6.
I would move amendment number 6.
Is there a second?
A second, I'll see.
There's a second from, from Counselor Gibson. All right. And just discussion, counselors, Counselor Sanchez, and then Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, I think, is problematic, because anything south of Central, which is still part of the transit corridor with mass transit now with the art project going into place, again, we have invested $30 million into the art project, and I think by limiting the development north of Central and south of Central, they would be basically handcuffed, and not being able to have any mixed use would be really problematic. Because I think we're going to see more development on the north side, yet we're not going to have it on the south side. I think this is going to be an effort by both the south and the north part of Central and the businesses along that corridor that want to use the mixed uses to develop the entire area. And I just think it's problematic, because you're going to have one side of Central with mixed use, and then the south side of Central will not have it. We've got a $30 million investment by the City of Albuquerque with the art project, and I think it would be beneficial to the entire corridor to have the mixed use.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Penney, I was just, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to respond to that. Maybe the staff can do a better job at responding to that, because it would not affect the MXM that's currently there, correct, throughout the Southwest Mesa and with the, in the premium transit corridor stations.
Mr. President, Counselor Penney, that's a good distinction. For, within 660 feet of the premium transit stations, the art stations, the MXM zoning would be retained, no matter what happens, whether amendment T were to have passed, whether this one passes, the, the nodes around the premium transit stations would retain their mixed-use zoning.
And I understand that, that it's only where the transit hubs are going to be located that it doesn't impact it, but it will impact every other business that's not along that hub, where they cannot switch that zoning to mixed use. And for me, that's problematic, because I think it has to be the entire corridor or nothing.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I have a real issue with this. I think it's, it's, it's extremely problematic to tell somebody on one side of the street that they can do something that is obviously popular and works and, and becomes a good product, and yet the people who own the property on the south side of the street can't do the same product, even though it's the same hub, it's the same mass transit area, it's the same idea that, obviously, one for the city here, we wouldn't have done this in the comprehensive plan and the zoning. I think this is, I think we might have some issues with this. Do we have a legal issue with this in any way? Mr. Tebow, that should be yours, shouldn't it?
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, my crystal ball only goes so far, and, and so, is there a legal issue to answer your question? There, there is an issue of disparity, north and south. That's the issue that you're raising. There is a legal theory underlying that that could be brought into play.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Penney?
Just to add to that, you know, I, I understand the need, and I understand why. I mean, it came out, the, it, it came out initially when the company, the IDO came out, is it actually had the areas that we're talking about here tonight as NRC. At a LUPs meeting, Counselor, Counselor Jones changed it to MXM, and I know it was, I, I don't know what her intention behind it, but I know some of the community input that she had received said that, you know, why are you doing this in a, in an area that, when east of the river actually has some of this MXM throughout? Well, I think, you know, the city attorney just kind of outlined it, you know, and I think some of the, the residents here from Martinez Town, they're nodding their head, and they're talking about, you know, the social and economic disparities that we have in our community. The southwest area, and it's known to all that has been redlined for, for, for years, and, and, and we have to, the investment hasn't been made in that community. And I'm hearing the community members talk, when they talk about the comprehensive plan, I know Michaela talked about it earlier and said that, you know, people don't want this to, to pass, and, and that it should actually, what, what other option do you have? I've been hearing, including myself and the community members from lots of these different communities, saying that they, they do want this comprehensive plan passed and the IDO passed, but they, what they do want is that there's some social and economic justice and that we're being heard in terms of the disparities that we have in our community. And unfortunately, with the MX, with the MXM, you know, traditionally, what's happened, and, and you see it through what's currently there within our community, we have 70%, 71% residential in the area, and, and that's not being addressed. And so, we're looking at this opportunity for the IDO, for communities of colors to be able to be heard and to be able to have their input as part of this process and to say enough's enough. You know, we, it's time that we get our fair share in terms of, of retail in our area, in terms of, you know, I mean, I couldn't do anything in terms of the sector plans, but I did implement a, a resolution to say that the sector plans are looked at as part of a historical document as we move forward, so that people can understand that these communities of colors, communities that have been there, and with the sector plan, when you, when you look at those, those aren't just zoning, zoning documents to community members. These are something that they use as a historical reference and, and really be able to know that these are communities that were there long before zoning even existed. This is, when we talk about Martinez Town and Barelas, these are, these are, these are townships, these are part of our history, part of our culture. And I think the outcry that I've been hearing since the beginning of this is, how do we preserve that, and how do we embrace that and respect that moving forward? Thank you.
All right. So, there's a motion and a second for floor amendment number 6. Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes and raise your hands? Opposed? And that fails on a 7 to 1 vote. That takes us back to the bill, Committee Substitute, oh 49. And for any further discussion by counselors, it's been moved in second, and, and it's been amended. Any further discussion, counselors? Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to, to move a 90-day deferral of this agenda item. I believe that this agenda item and the work that has been done, I want to first thank the staff for all the work that they have done. This has been a very complex issue, and this is overhauling the zoning code. Last week, we heard 19 amendments, and of those 19 amendments, 15 of those amendments were passed. Tonight, I think we've probably heard another 10 amendments, so between the two, just in one week, we heard a total of probably 29 amendments. And I think I heard two passed this evening. But because of the complexity of this issue, and because of the work that was involved, and I know that we're talking about a six-month deferral before the bill is actually implemented, and that's problematic for me, because if we don't have, I know it's not perfect, as, you know, some members of as you know, some members have said. If we don't have it perfect, we should try at least to get to the closest, we should try to get to, as close as we can to perfection with this legislation. I think that's how important this legislation is. And if it's going to be in six months and we look at this and then defer it again, I would like to just see a 90-day deferral, work with the problems that we are confronting now, and deal with those problems, and we need to look at a three-month deferral before the bill is implemented. I think that gives us ample opportunity. And at the same time, tomorrow night, or tomorrow, we elect a new mayor of Albuquerque, and I believe that his administration should be engaged and they should be involved in this process also, because it's going to impact the work that the planning department does each and every day with this major overhaul of this new ordinance. But I would request a 90-day deferral tonight, and we can come back and it'll be a six-month extension, maybe reduce that to three months to get this issue resolved. Because I still think there are many, many challenges that we are facing, and with that many amendments that we saw in just one week, I think it does make it problematic, and it is very challenging, both for, it was challenging for myself to go through all these 19 amendments, plus the actual bill itself. I mean, we've been working on this for close to three years, and the reason it has taken this long is because of the complexity. And it's not going to go away overnight. I mean, if we pass it tonight with it not going into place in six months, I still believe as we move down the road, there are going to be some other problematic issues that we possibly could confront, and I'd like to look at some of the legal remedies that we might be able to get to with the six-month or the 90-day deferral.
There's a motion for a 90-day deferral. Vice President Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's really interesting, in my district four, up there, and of course, we had some really good sector plans that really, I thought, solved a lot of our issues and had good growth in there, but there's still a couple neighborhoods that would like to have a presentation that I would like to see happen. And it's interesting, one gentleman came up in public comments, said this IDO was about protection and predictability, and I absolutely agree with him, except he's got a different perception of protection than a lot of the neighborhoods have. And that really concerns me, and I think something happened through the process here because, you know, I've only been a city counselor in Albuquerque, so I don't know, but you have this distrust and this conflict between neighborhoods and the development community. And I just, where the heck did that come from? And how did it get to this point? It's like there's, they don't trust each other. You know, we're all part of Albuquerque, we're all trying to do the right thing, and so, I don't know how we work on that, but I think everybody wants what's best for Albuquerque. And I don't know if the process, when we started this process, if we talked to the development community, then we went and talked to the neighborhood community, and we never brought them together and said, look, how do we make this better for everybody? So I've got some concerns about that. I really think there's some great things in the IDO, I really do. The protection issue is still a little worried about. We had an amendment on the floor that kept the same protection as far as notice and appeals, and it passed, and it at least passed for two minutes, and then there was another one that came up. And it is, I mean, the one that passed is better than what was in the IDO, but it's still not better than what was, what was in the, in the plan before. So, you know, I really want this to work. I think it will work. I tell you, I give Counselor Lewis a lot of credit for being here before a major election and all the work, and I appreciate you being here for this. But we are on the eve of an election, and, you know, even if we, maybe three months, maybe one month, just so that we can, I can take my amendments back to my coalition four, which I have a meeting this week, and explain, this is what we did, this is how, what my perception of how this is working. And I know a lot of folks want to pass it tonight, and I just, I just, you know, after we've worked so hard, I'm not sure I understand that. So, thanks for listening.
Counselor Gibson and then Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I guess I didn't realize this until this weekend when I was reading, and maybe I read it before and forgot, but the city first purchased this, it's like an off-the-shelf item in 1950s. So, the plan is as old as I am. I find that, I know. Not as old as you are, but almost as old as I am. It was like for a one-size-fits-all, obviously, we've changed and grown a lot in 60 years, and I'm sure that, you know, things have changed in the code, obviously, but I don't think it's ever the intention to go through all the zoning codes and fix everything that needs to be fixed in it. This is a transition, and that's what, you know, that's what we're doing. We're trying to fix things as we go along, true, but we're never going to be able, if we wait and try to fix down to the, to the level of detail that some people would really like to see, before we pass it, we may never have, you know, it could be years. And I just don't think that it's necessary for us to wait that long. And Counselor Winter said something that really stuck with me, something about lack of trust. We've been getting a lot of email on this, and not all of it says, slow down IDO. A lot of it does. And a few people have said, constituents said, said things kind of like, I won't be able to trust you anymore after this. Okay, so to that, I say, the best we can do is be honest and forthright and take a stand. You know, when, I think that when we're unable to take a stand, that's when we lose trust. If we wait for the new mayor to get into office, I don't think that's going to do us any good. The executive has never really been a part of this in the two years that I've been aware of. I don't really think that the executive branch has had anything to say about the IDO or the comp plan. And certainly, the new mayor is going to have his mind occupied on many, many, many other things before zoning. And then who is he going to talk to? Planners, the same people we're talking to. So, and I'm sorry that, you know, if people feel like they haven't been heard, but I'm not sure what else our planning staff and council in the planning department could do beyond that. I've met with people, talked with them on the phone, was up until very late last night, answering emails, all about this. So I'm ready, I'm ready to move, I'm ready to vote on this, and I would encourage my colleagues on this board to vote as well.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to make this quick, it's unlike my character, but I appreciate very much where we've come from in this. And Counselor Winter talked about that historic sort of distrust that some, just seems to permeate continually in these development decisions. I agree with that, and it's problematic, and it's hard to sort of bridge that, but I think the IDO, as you mentioned, has some real pieces that are designed deliberately to do that. We have a new process now that requires developers to go to neighborhoods before they file their plans. That's innovative and unique, and it puts, it requires that developers with big ideas think about neighborhood concerns first, and that those two groups sit down and put their concerns on the record so that it's clear, we're going in the front door, who opposes what. And I also appreciate that, by my count, there are a number of, and Ms. Morris, we don't have to get into it specifically, but I know we can, we've done it before, there are some new places where neighborhood associations now are going to get notice of every permit issued in their neighborhood by email, not just the ones that planning thinks they ought to know about, but just-in-case sort of process. I think that's huge towards ensuring that neighborhood associations, especially those like the International District and Sanho and Martinez Town, that rightly so have felt sort of excluded or able to be excluded from some of these decisions, now have some assurance that they know everything that happens in their neighborhood and that nobody can walk in the door at planning with a big idea unless they've had a chance and required to go speak with them first. This is not perfect, and it is on the eve of an election, but I think a 90-day deferral is only half as good as the six-month delay process that allows us to have the full bill with all amendments before a new mayor, a new planning director, more than 200 neighborhood associations in the city, and a process by which each of them can sit down, look at it, provide amendments to us, and a fast-track process for counselors to bring those amendments directly to this body instead of having to go through EPC. A new administration gets to do that and weigh in, and as we've heard tonight, if six months isn't long enough, we'll continue to do that work. But I think we have to have something to point to and to work towards. So, without the six months, I wouldn't vote for this. Without those extra processes, that neighborhoods get more input earlier and more, as we've added, more sort of public meetings on what were formerly permissive use or just conditional use that were approved at the administrative level, now go back to neighborhoods and have public meetings and input on everything from walls to conditional uses on all kinds of development. I think this is a good model, and what I think comes out of it is that we have stronger neighborhoods because they have a purpose and a thing to do with every decision that gets made in the planning process in their neighborhood. And so, I don't see that we're passing this to put it in place tonight. It doesn't go into effect with Mayor Berry's signature if he chooses to sign it. This goes into effect six months from now, after a new mayor and a new planning and 200 neighborhood associations in the city get a chance to look at the actual bill and bring us very specific changes and requests for their neighborhoods that make it work for them. And so, because of that process, I feel like we have gotten as close as we can get here at this body with the nine of us, and it's our turn to turn it over to everybody else to start taking a look at that from a new mayor to the new neighborhood associations and a new planning director. So, I encourage our colleagues to vote for this so that we can begin that six-month process.
So, there is a motion and a second for a 90-day deferral. This actually is technically a little, is it a little bit less than 90 days? Is that correct, Counselor Sanchez, because of just the schedule of council meetings? This would be the March 6th council meeting if we were to defer this. So we do have a motion and a second that, I will say, I will oppose the motion. I respect and applaud Counselor Winter's desire to continue to engage in his community, and I wish to continue to engage with anyone from my district who wants to talk about this. And we do have, you know, within this ordinance, we are giving ourselves the authority to continue to make changes. That's probably going to drive some people crazy to hear me say that, but there is a mechanism to continue to work on this during the next six months. But meanwhile, as Counselor Gibson says, we've got to make the transition in order to start that process. We've got to make that transition in order to allow people to voluntarily apply to downzone themselves, and they'll be able to do that with our assistance and without having to pay the fees that normally you would be paid for zone change rates. So that's just my two cents on it. But Counselor Sanchez, to close, if you wish.
Urges support.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes and raise your hands.
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm not going to do it. Yes, so there's three in favor and opposed.
No.
That fails on a three to six. And then we're back on the bill as amended. All those in favor, or is there any further discussion or closes on the bill? I do think that this has been a long and very deliberative process, and as the governing body, we are, we are the body that must have the final say on land use decisions, not the next mayor, not this mayor. But we do appreciate the collaboration that's been very active and a lot of hard work put in between the planning department and our staff. Counselor Lewis.
And, Mr. President, I definitely want to thank the staff. I know specifically, my staff and my analysts have put a lot of time into this and working with our district, and our approach has been that any suggestion of any kind of amendment, my response was, let's write it up. Let's write it up and let's get it to the full council or at least in committee early on, so that we can have a full discussion, even if I knew that some of the other counselors might not be too happy with it, or even whether I agreed with it or not. I wanted us to be able to offer those amendments, and so I think this has been a good process. I think that, you know, we have an opportunity before this is implemented to be able to change it. And also, you know, look, I want to do, you know, my job as a city counselor, you know, that's why I'm here tonight, had a few other things to do tonight, but I, you know, and also the thought of just, you know, voting on this tonight, it's been a good process. If I could vote on something and have an opportunity to actually sign it down the road, that's pretty cool, too.
And thanks for that, Counselor Lewis, and I also wanted to echo the statement that we appreciate your being here tonight. It is difficult, and, you know, when we were trying to schedule the special meeting, we were also juggling a number of schedules, and we were trying to get the entire council to be here for this vote. So there is a motion and a second on committee substitute 049. I guess I'll urge your support as my closing. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, raise your hand. And opposed?
No.
And that passes on a six to three vote. That takes us to item B, committee substitute R-213. I move a due pass.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for a due pass. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes. Yes, opposed?
No.
And that passes on the same vote. And it takes to item C, committee substitute R-240. Move a due pass.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for a due pass. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes, raise your hands.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
And that passes on the same vote. There being no further business, this special city council meeting is adjourned.